12:30. Welcome to Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting, November 27, 2023. On this right here, we're gonna... When we come up to approve the agenda. Mark, you want us to lead us in the pledge?
Mr. Chairman?
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, roll call board members, please.
Spencer.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Astrogan.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda. We're gonna add, we need some motions. So that would be number, we'll just write it in their new business. We have A and B, and then number seven will be motions. Eight will be public comment, and nine will be adjournment. I correct, Michelle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll make that motion to approve it with the changes.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not in favor of this meeting.
Okay.
I don't know. The reason being is that I have some comments to make. I usually don't have anything typed up, but I do today. Entire board should be aware that the delegated authority, Controller Julie Valentino, issued the directives to replace the steel plates. That permission was replaced from Eagle, Honorable, May 30th, 2023. From my non-lawyer perspective, this makes the action non-criminal, in my opinion. At the beginning of the term, Eric made some verified verbal threats to the Commissioner by Chairman Russo, proposing to make his life a... Well, we don't have to get into it, and force him out of office. I believe now that Eric is potentially planning to bring forth a challenge of incompatibility to offices, that our Chairman, David Russo, is the marketing township fire chief in his position as county commissioner. I believe this is an attempt to embarrass our chairman and marginalize Eric's criminal case. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I didn't, Mr. Chair, I didn't understand the first part of your comments. Mark, would you repeat those again?
Sure. The entire, the entire board should be aware that the delegated authority, which is Controller Julie Valentino, issued the directives-
Delegated authority of what?
The Lakes.
When? At what point in time?
December of last year.
Actually, she was in charge of them, of Holden Lake, since March 20, I think it's March 2nd or March 22 of 2022.
I'm fine with that. No problem with that, that you issued the directives to replace the steel plates. That permission was received from Eagle, Honorable, May 30. And from my non-lawyer perspective, because obviously I'm not where, I believe this, this makes it non-criminal. With that being said, Chair, this is kind of an unusual meeting. But I ask Controller Jody Valentino, if she feels, feels forthright to be able to elaborate on my comments. No pressure from this direction.
Sure. I've actually spoken to, well, at least two of these commissioners, provided communications to the current, now Holden Lake delegated authority as well, in regards to specifically the steel plates, which obviously were no surprise to anybody since they've been discussed at meetings. We all received email complaints that they weren't in tune enough during the summertime. But what I have for you is the email that went out on Tuesday, May 30 of 2023, that I sent to Bill Sullivan, in which I copied Julie Nordquist, who's the secretary and keeps everything up to date on the website, so that that way everything's nice and transparent. And additionally, I copied David Russo, who is our chairperson, and Doug Shy, who was an additional maintenance person. And it says, "Good morning, Bill. We need to do the following for Holden Lake, lake level control structure. Close Holden Lake's existing open boards and gates immediately. Receive verification from Gaylord Eagle Office to replace steel plates as the permit expired, and schedule a pour after replace the steel plates. Please and thank you." So it was my directive that the steel plates go back in.
I have some comments I'd like to make now?
Mm-hmm.
If, if that is-
Yeah.
What is the motion? We kind of got off track, it looks like.
Kinda. So can we go ahead and do the vote? And, I mean, this seems to be all falling under A for new business, so let's get there, maybe?
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
There's a motion and a second, and I was at discussion. Michelle, call roll.
Mr. Chair, just-
What is the motion?
That's the thing-
To accept the, approve the agenda.
Okay. And I'm gonna say no, because I don't think this meeting needs to be transparent. That's why I think it's, I appreciate Michelle's comments, because this is kind of convoluted. I'm shooting from the hip here, but I don't think this meeting should be here, so I'm gonna vote no.
This email changes nothing.
It does to me.
Okay. Michelle, call for a roll, please.
Astrogan.
Yes.
Milburn.
No.
Spencer.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes. Now we're at-
Public comment.
Public comment first. There are public comment out there. Okay. New business. Now we continue. Eric, you want to start off?
Yes. Just want to hand out information. This is a copy of the statute. Looks like it's two over there. I'm gonna address this in just a little bit, pardon my comments. And I don't know.
This meeting, from what I understand, we passed a motion the other day to have someone contact the Michigan State Police. And who should be the person to contact, or persons to contact, the Michigan State Police? We've got a real problem here regarding the installation of the 5,000-pound, 5-by-19-foot steel plate in the Holden Lake level control structure. Earlier this month, this month, one of our commissioners was convicted of violating MCL 302.30720, which states-
Didn't you just say all this in your last meeting?
No, I did not go over this in my last meeting.
Okay. Sounds like it.
Without interruption, please. A person who is not authorized by a delegated authority or department to operate a dam or other normal level control facility, and who changes or causes to change the level of an inland lake, the normal level which has been established under this part, or any previous act governing lake levels, and for one which the delegated authority or the department has taken steps to maintain the normal level, is guilty of a misdemeanor, punishable by a fine of not more than $1,000, or imprisonment for not more than one year, or both, and shall be required to pay the actual cost of restoration or replacement of the dam, and any other property, including any natural resource, that is damaged or destroyed as a result of the violation. That's the end of the statute. Clearly, the installation of the steel plate on Holden Lake has changed its level, and to a much greater degree. To make matters worse, I recently learned that the steel plate was reinstalled during the month of June 2023, way after the permit had expired, and it's been there for at least five months, not just three days. And the steel plate is 40 times the size of the 6-inch by 4.75-foot dinky little stop log that was installed on the Higgins Lake Dam here. Not only is the person who committed this crime guilty of that offense, they are also guilty of violating the statute I just handed out, MCL 234315.25. And you know what? I'm gonna have to borrow that from me. I'm gonna read that one right there.
I gotta get two pincers, they have one work.
Here. Another one. Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act 241, 1994, 2, 3.231525. Commencement of civil action requests placed civil fine contempt will for a reckless violation as misdemeanor. Penalty, subsequent violations, fine for failure to obtain permit, restoration of site, schedule of administrative monetary penalties for minor violations. I'm just gonna read number three. In addition to any other relief granted under this section, this is different than the other statute. In addition to any other relief granted under this section, the court may impose a civil fine of not more than $10,000 for each day of violation of this part, a rule promulgated under this part, or a permit issued under this part. Or, a person found guilty of contempt of court for the violation of an order of the court shall be subject to a civil fine not to exceed $10,000 for each day of the violation. A person who willfully or recklessly violates this part or rule promulgated under this part, an order issued by the department, or a condition in a permit issued under this part, which violation places or may place a person in imminent danger of death, serious bodily harm, or may cause serious property damage, or serious damage to natural resources, or a person who has knowledge, or is responsible for such a violation, is guilty of a misdemeanor, punishable by imprisonment for not more than one year, and a fine of not less than $2,500, or more than $25,000 for each violation or both. Six. A person required to obtain a permit or activity regulated under this part who does not obtain that permit shall be fined not less than twice the fee charged for the appropriate permit application. A possible $10,000 fine a day is a lot of money that the cows, that the county could face, could face in fines. We need the steel plate taken out as soon as possible to avoid the possibility of those kinds of fines. I would suggest that we entertain a motion in this meeting to have that steel plate removed immediately. Commission is at a crossroads. Crimes were committed when Matt, when a massive steel plate was installed on Holden Lake. If one of our very own commissioners did so, and kept the other commissioners, kept it from the other commissioners, there's a problem. I've had a few of my constituents email me this weekend and tell me that the steel plate was not there on Memorial Day, and then it appeared on the Fourth of July this past summer. So now we know the approximate time it was installed. If more than one person knew about the steel plate, or participated in the installation of it, or found out about it afterwards, and allowed it to continue without notifying the other commissioners or other authorities, it's a conspiracy. We've all heard about the cover-up being greater than the original crime itself, and it's true in this case as well. A conspiracy to commit a crime is a misdemeanor under statute MCL 750.157A, and violating the statute can actually have greater consequences than the original crime that was committed. MCL 750.157, conspiracy to commit an offense, this is the statute. In an illegal manner, in the penalty, Section 157A, a person who conspires together with one or more persons to commit an offense prohibited by law, or to commit a legal act in an illegal manner is guilty of the crime of conspiracy, punishable as provided herein, except as provided in paragraph B, C, and D. The commission of the offense prohibited by law is punishable by imprisonment for one year or more. That person convicted under this section shall be punished by a penalty equal to that which could be imposed if he had been convicted of committing the crime he conspired to commit, and in the discretion of the court, an additional penalty fine of $10,000 may be imposed. If the commission of the offense prohibited by law is punishable by imprisonment for less than one year, except for provided in paragraph B, the person convicted under this section shall be imprisoned for not more than one year, nor fined more than $1,000 or both, such fine and imprisonment. That's the end of the statute. Anyone who committed these criminal acts of installing the steel plate in Holden Lake Dam could have violated several statutes, including conspiracy. Those who knew about this criminal act could have also be prosecuted for not reporting it, and they would be guilty of conspiracy as well. If anyone used their position of authority and ordered subordinates to commit a criminal act, or ask subordinates to cover up criminal acts, they would be guilty of workplace coercion, which is also a crime. Additionally, when the investigation occurs, covering it up and not telling the police that crimes took place is obstruction of justice. Lying to police is also a crime, MCL 750.411, a misdemeanor punishable by a year in jail, and a $1,000 fine. This shouldn't be a normal way of doing business in Roscommon. In this case, we know the crimes were committed, steel plate was there, and no one can deny that. Investigation concerning how many crimes were committed is the question. Today, we are going to discuss who is going to take this information to the Michigan State Police. Since I have a lot of information, I would suggest that myself and another member of the Board of Commissioners, namely Commissioner Wilson, do that. And during the motion time, I will move to do so. Thank you.
You're saying you never knew about the steel plate being in?
Not during an illegal time, Mr. Russo. This is not the time to go over that. We can go over that in court when you're sitting in front of the jury.
Okay. Glad everything, our meetings are on tape. Okay.
Can you make a comment, sir?
Yes.
First of all, you don't really know a crime's making. That's correct.
Um. We haven't had much information on the subject come to the board. Perhaps with more information coming to the board, we could better direct our efforts. Police investigation would only be done to determine if a crime has been committed. We are not the ones to determine that.
You're absolutely right.
It would be nice if everybody could sit down and share all information on this subject, not have to go that route.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The controller never had a chance to elaborate, but I would like to make a comment. First of all, there ain't no conspiracy. We're not that smart, okay? There's no cover-up. That there's conspiracy infers that there is a conspiracy. Maybe not as articulate as I would like to, to announce, because I know we have our legal folks back there. Bottom line, we ain't that smart. I know that's bad English. There's no cover-up. And, and I haven't had a chance for the controller, at her leisure, to be able to elaborate on my comments, if you would incline, Mr. Chair. You have Madam Controller elaborate on what comments I made earlier.
You would like to speak, Joe, it's up to you. Asking you to do so.
Yeah, I don't really, I don't really know what to say. It's this very interesting position, and I, I understand Commissioner Astrogan's concerns. My thought would be that certainly the installation of the steel plates was brought up in several of our meetings, so it was not a secret to this Board of Commissioners. As a matter of fact, several commissioners received emails, or were copied on emails from constituents who were angry that they were not placed in earlier in the years. And certainly, if anyone asks for that copy, I would be more than happy to provide it, just as I provided you this email today. I'm not sure why you think there's a conspiracy. It's really hard to cover up steel plates, especially when you have a Holden Lake community Facebook pace post that publicizes those, and comments on a weekly basis on all of the lake levels. I'm also concerned, because you, you did read from one of the statutes in regards to, I believe it was, the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, Act 451, where it talks about variations of a person required to obtain a permit for activity regulated under this part, who does not obtain that permit shall be fined not less than twice the fee charged for the appropriate permit application. If you were to do this correctly, and go through personnel, and handle this in the manner that is so set up through statute, information might be able to be shared. But instead, and here, here we are.
Yep.
We're dramatic again. I would also like to point out that the one statute says, "A person who is not authorized by a delegated authority." So in looking on my behalf and my action, clearly I was the delegated authority. Commissioner, Commissioner Astrogan did point that out. And I do agree with Commissioner Astrogan that you became aware last week, that there is clearly in a public meeting, there is no permit, so you do have to take immediate action in regards to the steel plate. That is one thing we definitely agree on.
Thank you, Jody.
Problem with the discussions of the steel plate that have taken place over the last year or so, everyone was under the assumption that an Eagle permit was there and in place. That is not the case. It was never sought.
And I understand that, sir.
Well, that, that's the problem. There's no Eagle permit there.
And I, again, there's more information. If you did this the correct way, by going through personnel and holding investigations for policies, per various public employment acts that require you to provide some pretty specific information to keep yourselves from being sued as the Boards of Commissioners, this information could be provided to you, but certainly not in the way that you're trying to go about it in order to retaliate against people for what you feel is some conspiracy to put you up on charges, sir. It is-
I'm not trying to retaliate against anybody.
It is blindly and clear to most people, because the steel plates have been in effect forever.
And we were all under the impression, at least I was, that Eagle had a permit. We, I was not aware that they were not permitted until we received the information from Shepkey Consulting, that there is no permit in place. There hasn't been since September of 2022. That is a problem. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter who everybody knew, and everything is all-
Commissioner Astrogan, let me ask the question.
Please let me finish.
No, sir.
No, let me finish. The floor. She has the floor.
Therefore, when I was placed as delegated authority, what training did this board provide to me? What compensation did this board provide to me? When I went to each commissioner individually numerous times and begged to be removed because of the overload of work and the position that you have placed me in, you have placed me in? How many motions came forward? How many times did you motion to remove me as delegated authority? None. So therefore, most of this blame may fall on me for failure to renew a permit. I'll take it. You know what? I quit as Holden Lake delegated authority. Oh, wait. I did that already.
That's right.
I have also spoken to Eagle on my own to discuss the fact of the permit, and the verbal authorization that was received by our Buildings and Grounds Department for this permit. But here we are, sir.
May I speak now? I have never authorized you to be delegated authority. I was not a member of this board when you were authorized to be delegated authority. It was a past previous board that authorized you to be delegated authority. Okay? And?
Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Chair.
Real quick.
In all this, I think threatening people with fines and-
I'm not threatening, I'm just stating the law.
Well, I understand that, but I think it's counterproductive to figuring out what went on here. I really think the board should make more effort in trying to figure if there's criminal charges need to be filed or not before we move forward.
I agree.
It's not up to us, Mr. Wilson.
You agree too?
We, we also need to take-
Okay, we're gonna move on now. Discussion over. Remove the plates from Holden Lake LLC. Do we need a formal motion on this, Michelle, or can we agree to it? Okay. I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give five-minute recess while two motions are drafted to remove the plates from the Holden Lake LCC. An emotion if we need to direct a board member to contact the Michigan State-
Have a comment on that?
Yes.
Um, we have a delegated authority on Holden Lake. Name's gonna be very good. He's already been talking with Eagle about this. I think we just need to turn it over to him and let him work with Eagle on how to proceed from here, and get it in writing from Eagle.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I mean, it's-
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that, too. Okay, can we draft that up as a motion? Michelle?
So you want two different motions?
Yes.
Both of them are directing the current Holden Lake delegated authority, one to remove the steel plates for Holden Lake, and the other is to, is he contacting MSP, or is he working with-
Well.
To determine-
I have a motion for that drawn up.
One second. Well, the second motion, if we should contact the Michigan State Police, yes or no? Would that be fair?
We already passed that motion last week.
What's that? Okay, we just won't make a motion.
I have, I have a motion I'd like to bring forth. My motion is to delegate Commissioner Rex Wilson and Commissioner Eric Astrogan to contact the Michigan State Police and report the steel plate that's installed on Holden, and provide the Michigan-
No, I like Rex's motion better.
Mr. Russo, I'm not done reading my motion.
Oh, okay, but I'm just telling you.
Motion to delegate Commissioner Rex Wilson and Commissioner Eric Astrogan to contact the Michigan State Police and report the steel plate that is installed on Holden, and provide the Michigan State Police with all the information they know about its installation, ask them to investigate who installed it, and report back to the commission, and then notify a prosecutor to prosecute, prosecute those who violated the requisite statutes.
Okay, I'm not in favor of that motion. I like Rex's better. What's?
I think we should be able to move with Eric's comment. I think he has a valid comment. Just because he puts it forward doesn't mean we have to agree with it, but I think he has a valid comment, at least to put it on the slate.
Then we can vote no.
Again, I meant, I mean, how the outcome is-
Right.
I think-
Well, that's my feelings.
You have, you have a responsibility-
Give that to the clerk.
Thank you.
And give that to the clerk, and we'll take a five-minute recess. Is that long enough for you, Michelle? 10 minutes. Let's see, motion number one, would you like to read that, Michelle, please?
I would love to.
Thank you.
Move to direct Holden Lake delegated authority Chase Shepkey to work with Eagle regarding the removal of the steel plate from the Holden Lake lake level control structure.
So move. Any discussion? Clerk, can you please call roll? Oh, yes, Mark.
Yeah, who's gonna direct?
It would be, we could, Rex and Darlene, because they're taking care of that right now.
We?
Right now to remove.
Okay. Well, the delegated authorities to work with Eagle on-
Right.
What happens if you work with Eagle and Eagle's-
Then they stay in. What's that, Mark? Well, regarding the removal per Eagle, we could just put per Eagle in there.
Well, it's just saying, it's just simply stating regarding the removal. It's not saying whether it's gonna be removed or not, it's just simply-
Just regarding.
Regarding the removal, so that way.
And then I guess Darlene and I will talk to Chase on that subject, if that's-
Yeah.
Okay.
Clerk, call roll, please.
Spencer. Milburn.
Yes.
Astrogan.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Watch and carry.
Okay, motion number two, Michelle.
Move to delegate Commissioner Rex Wilson and Commissioner, Commissioner Eric Astrogan to contact the Michigan State Police to request an investigation be conducted into the placement of a steel plate on the Holden Lake lake level control structure without a valid permit.
So move.
Is there a second? With no second, that motion is dropped. Okay. A public comment. During public comment. With that being said, number nine, adjournment.
We'll move, Mr. Chair.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, let's give it 10 minutes, and we'll go in there second. Okay, let's give it ten minutes and we'll go in our second meeting. November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Thinking how I wanna do this. Uh, first we'll do the pledge.
Mr. Chair.
Plenipotentiary. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll come.
Wilson. Ostergaard. Milburn.
Here.
Censor. Here. Russo.
Here. Approval of the agenda. Before we get to that. This being a special meeting and we have it posted. Can Rebecca actually talk on some paperwork that she has or?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay. We'll have to do it regularly. Yeah.
She can talk during public comment.
Okay. Bring you up for that, Rebecca. Okay, we have a motion. I'll second it.
No, no, no. We are. We have to approve the agenda. However, we need to make the same. We need to make the same change to the agenda that we made in the.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Number seven will be motions and resolutions. Number eight will be public comment. Number nine will be adjournment.
Okay.
Now you need a motion in a.
And I'll second that. Discussion. Okay, clerk call roll, please.
Censor. Yes. Wilson.
Yes.
Ostergaard.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Okay. Censor, would you like to kick this off? Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Yeah. You have to turn your mic on and identify yourself, please.
Rebecca Reagan, Roscommon County Treasurer. I wasn't planning on talking today. I think all of you. Except for Eric, I think just today I got a chance to talk to him. I talked to everybody else on Wednesday about my fund balance plan. And when I explained it to Mark, he asked me to write up some motions, which I think most of you I have shown those motions to. So the fund balance plan basically would take what fifteen percent, what equals the fifteen percent fund balance. And invest that in MBIA, right now making five point one two percent interest. Which then your fifteen percent would grow very quickly to the eighteen percent. That Darlene, or excuse me, Commissioner Sensor talked about having the fund balance reach. So I would appreciate at your next meeting that you would be able to consider. Number one, the fund balance plan. Number two, the motions that I have written up.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment out there? Number six, new business. The censor.
So after talking with. Some other commissioners and with under sheriff and sheriff and our controller and. Some of the other. Employees. I'd like to entertain possibly a millage and maybe it be for the Roscommon County. Public Safety Millage. What that would include would be. Roscommon, Roscommon County seasonal patrols, sting jail operations and programmed security. Safety, security upgrades within the Roscommon County buildings and emergency management. Um, I know we don't have a lot of time to get that going and get our foot on the ground for February, but I still think it's really important for us to at least try to attempt. If the millage were to pass, obviously it would be earmarked for these programs and these programs only. And. Basically, we would have to decide on what type of mill. That we would want to be asking for.
What do you have right now?
I have it anywhere from two point five all the way down to one point five. Looking at, and I know we haven't finalized the budget, but looking at numbers that our controller has provided with us with the budgets and things like that. I think that we should be looking at at least one point seven five, if not two.
I would go along with the two after discussion with you. I don't know what the rest of the board's feeling, sir.
An estimated would bring us three million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty cents.
Turn your mic on and identify yourself, please.
Under Sheriff Ben Low.
Thank you.
So what is your specific question?
How do you feel? You feel comfortable with that amount of money? We spend it the way that we need to. And the kicker is, is that it lasts long enough. In your opinion, would it last long enough to do the job that?
I guess that depends on what decisions you guys make as a board. What we have discussed is a ten-year millage at that level. When you look at the things. Within the county budget. That. Pick up a large portion of our budget. The jail is one of those things. It's. Mandated that we. Provide for care and custody of inmates. It's one of those things that you can't really get around. And it's one of those things that's very costly to do. When you add that in with all the other services that. Mr. Sensor was reading in her motion there. I, I think it's going to. Take a significant amount of money to cover all of those services. I don't know what the community will be open to. I. In my opinion, from talking with people throughout the community over the last several years, trying to pass a heavily rollback, I think that they. Would be more in favor of a millage for these kinds of services than just a blanket headly, here's the money and take it and do what you want.
I believe targeted millages are much better too. So you feel comfortable with the two, the two, or should we go one seven five, two point two five? What do you feel?
I, I think two is, is a good figure. I don't know whether two will be successful. I think two will give us the money that we need to operate. I think all we can do is ask ultimately is up to the public to decide whether.
Sure.
It's something they want to do.
Based on that, I would feel comfortable with two, two.
Yeah, and talking with Darlene, I, I like the idea of splitting it out so people and not being able to. Take any excess or shortage and spend that in other areas of the general budget. People like that idea. I, I, at least I do. I think a lot better. Because they know it's gonna go for those particular services and not gonna be spent elsewhere. And any averages or anything, any excess is not going to be thrown back into the general budget. It's gonna be defined to just that specific thing. So then the following years, if we have excess, then the millages could actually be rolled back. So. I'm, I'm in favor of, of, of cutting that out. In fact, I think a lot more of our government should be managed and budgeted that way.
I like the idea when Darlene came to me with it and it spells it out. And like you mentioned, it's just not a blanket for everything. And. Like Eric said, it spells everything down.
In. Much of her conversation with me was like Eric was saying. You guys will have to be the ones to manage that this board or future boards as far as. We can ask for two, but if that's not needed, you guys are the ones who are gonna have to make those decisions of what is needed year after year.
Right.
You got my support.
Thank you. Uh, Anna Clerk. When does this language have to be approved to be on the ballot?
It has to be filed with the clerk's office December fifth by four o'clock PM.
When's our next meeting?
After that.
After that.
Okay, so we want to make the motion today. Uh, do you have the language for that motion?
Not the language for the actual motion.
We don't have any discussion on this?
No.
Oh, okay. The fifth is Tuesday.
Um. Am I correct in the. Two mills and we find we don't need two mills? We can cut that levy back year to year. Is that correct?
Are. I have a question. Are we gonna reduce the other millage? Is that gonna be two percent off of our general millage or is this just gonna be in addition to? Because I, I can see the people saying, hey, this is just another way to take it out of the general budget. Separate it, which is fine, but are we gonna be reducing it or is this just gonna be another tack on two percent?
Right now it would be a tack on.
And that's because you already approved the millage collection for the general. That was already, that was already done when you approved the L four zero two-nine in the fall that equalization director Hauserman presents to you.
So we're gonna take this out of the budget and we're not gonna do anything to take anything off of the, I can see people saying it's just a. Accounting trick. That's what I see. And while I'm, while I agree with the, the concept, it shouldn't be an accounting trick.
I don't see it as a counting trick. I see that, that.
Well, we're getting in trouble. Well, what is our current millage? In the, for the general budget?
Four point, I don't know it off the top of my head and I'm sorry, but it's, I'm gonna say four point. Eight, one, six, three.
Of which currently our.
That's the.
Emergency services is covered inside that amount.
Um, with the exception of those that we no longer have anymore under seasonal patrol. A portion, the only seasonal patrol that we still have is marine patrol and that actually comes out of the two oh seven. That actually comes out of the sheriff. Portions of security come out of sheriff, obviously. But yes, so for the most part, I would say eighty percent. Yes.
Well, so what we're doing is we're taking out of one pocket. Okay? And creating another pocket that we're gonna put two percent in and this pocket's gonna stay the same.
Correct. To do the.
It's an accounting.
Well, yes, no, because these are areas that if our, if we don't have money, these are areas that are gonna have to be cut sooner or later. So it's really not an accounting trick. It is, if we don't get money for these things and the general fund isn't where it needs to be.
Right.
It's not an accounting trick.
I, I hear Eric's concerns. The office of validity. What are you suggesting?
If we're gonna take, if we're going to take. Emergency services out of the general budget. Okay, and not reduce the general budget. Millage at all. And we're just gonna tack on another two percent. It's just like two percent tack on and. In other words, if we're gonna take some out of, of one. We're gonna take some of the expense out of one, we gotta shift that expense to the.
We don't need to collect that full amount on the other end of it. We don't have to. But all of a sudden, we might need a roof. Might need that money. Or the parking lot. Or electrical or plumbing is still much.
Well. Well. Maybe the people out here don't understand, but I, I understand totally. We're, we're just adding on another two percent and it's gonna be dedicated, which, which I think is good. It's gonna be dedicated, so we should reduce the other millage by a certain percentage, maybe not the full two percent. Maybe one percent. I, I mean, because all you're doing is you're shuffling the cards on the deck.
We, we have the authority to do that every year.
But it's gotta pass.
Well, we have the authority.
Has to pass.
We have the authority to not levy full millage every year.
I understand, but this, we, this also has to be passed by the voters. We have to.
That's right.
Tolerable to the voters.
Right.
So just saying, if I was a voter and I am, I'd say, I'm looking at this and I say. Oh, while they're keeping the general budget the same, but they're taking a big expense out of the, out of the general fund, big expense, which is. Uh, emergency services. They're putting it over here and we're gonna add on two percent on the emergency services. And the, and the general ledger is gonna stay the same or the general budget is gonna stay the same. So essentially you're just asking for a two percent millage increase, which is. For, for something right now, that's like a fifty percent increase. I can, I can see a lot of resistance with that. And I don't know how the voters feel, but I, I can see a lot of resistance.
Thank you.
How are we gonna sell that without, how are we gonna sell that without taking something off of the general budget?
Thank you for your comment. So we need to get this information. We need to approve this today, so.
And you can't prove this today. Can't do it. The, the public hasn't been informed. The millage, the, the motion would just be put together today. I suppose you could do it, but I strongly recommend the chairman.
Well, we're gonna need another special meeting then to approve the language.
Be then Friday. The public needs to know. Chris needs to get it out in the paper. There needs to be some, some kind of public forum. That the people that, there's been, there's been no input from the public.
I agree.
I agree, Mr. Row. Again, I, I appreciate the, the chair's enthusiasm. But the kicker is, is that we need to have a special meeting. Otherwise, we're not being transparent. You can't talk about it. We actually have to do it. And it's just my recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's what I brought up last week. What's everyone scheduled December first?
What day is that, Mr. Chair?
December first.
It's a good day.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday at ten o'clock would be good because it gives everybody a chance to know about it before.
Okay, Michelle, are you available Friday, ten o'clock for a special meeting to approve this language?
I'm not here. I would have to have one of my staff sit in because two of us will be at, uh, train the trainer for elections for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Michelle. Can you? One second. Darlene, can you get with the clerk to get the proper language?
I, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm scheduled for a meeting I mentioned quite a while ago down in, uh. In East Lansing, uh, on the wakeboard. Situation on, uh, on the lakes.
Okay.
I've paid, I've already prepaid that.
Sure.
Is there? Can we do it the day before? Thursday?
Been having so many special meetings.
I don't know if that's the last day of your season.
What time do you come out of the woods, Rex?
I can be here at ten o'clock tomorrow.
Okay, Thursday at ten AM.
I can do that.
Anyway, Mr. Chair. I was about to say this would give time for. This to be reviewed by. Equalization Director.
Yeah.
And get more of the wording in order.
Well, we're gonna approve the, you know, for our discussion. We can't vote on it, but for Darlene. Or. Rex. I know has been working on this to get the language for two percent to move forward. Is that agreement?
Yeah, my recommendation too is since Chris is here today to make sure Chris gets a copy of the, of the proposed military request before she.
Sure.
You put in the paper. Important for the public record.
And then I also would like to put on. For Thursday, because I could have more than one. At a special meeting. The treasurer's information to be voted on also. She discussed it today. We could vote on that Thursday too.
We can do that after we approve the budget. We have lots of time.
Okay.
And that gives us time to thoroughly review everything and make sure all our ducks are.
Sure.
Let's do our extra.
Okay.
I would have to say that I agree. I think both of them are very confusing topics that you guys probably want a lot more time to have that information and look at. And I know then that would give more time for each of you to, to speak with Rebecca a little bit more.
Okay.
Fully understand where the ones at.
I like her thoughts. Right.
Because this is her, her taxes, her.
Correct.
And I think too, I, I feel like I'm bringing redundant and probably am, but the kicker is it's important for Rebecca's information to get out to the public. Especially, especially a separate piece. I think it deserves, deserves attention just on this specific matter during, during a board meeting. Because it is a big deal. She's proposing some really big stuff and it's gonna really help her budget and I appreciate her time and attention. Thank you.
Are we gonna have two special meetings then?
Just one.
Just one to cover the.
Yeah, ten AM regarding the two percent millage.
Just to do the millage.
Just to do the millage. Two percent. It's the only thing gonna be on the.
Safety millage?
Yep.
Yep.
Public safety.
Is there any public comment? With that being said, number nine adjournment. Second, all in favor? See you.